Okay guys, it's seven o'clock. Everyone can turn on their new technology in front of them. I'm gonna need for you guys to quiet down. I know you're excited, we're all excited. But the meeting has officially started, okay? So today is August 8th, 2019, 7 o'clock. We're here for our regular meeting. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Headland to lead us in the case.
Sure. First, I'd like us to have a moment of silence for those in El Paso and in Dayton, Ohio, that have gone through the senseless killings. Lord, we thank you for today and, Lord, we just ask that you help put an end with people in Congress, whatever it takes to stop this stupidity. Whatever it takes. We put that in your hands, Lord, and we pray for all those that have been involved in this. Our hearts go out to each and every one of them. Lord, I also wanna thank you for our new police officers that are gonna be sworn in tonight. Lord, I ask that you put a hedge of protection around them.
Turn that off.
And thank you, sir. We ask all this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Alright, so as everyone can see, this is probably the most highly attended board meeting we've ever had. So we're gonna try to get through this as quickly and as easily as possible. What's next on the agenda is the actual approval of the agenda. And I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
First and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, motion carries. Next up is swearing in of new police officers, Ms. Hurd and the new police officers. Hi, Robert Morse.
Mayor Parrish, who was the guest. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will alert vigilance.
That I will alert vigilance.
To enforce the criminal laws.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced in any manner.
On account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent they will.
Not inconsistent they will.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a lawful officer.
As a lawful officer.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
There will be some judgment.
So help me God.
Alright, it's not too often I get to get up and move around in a meeting, but that's exactly what I'm gonna do right now. I'm not gonna answer anything, see how she's doing. I see the green light, we're good, okay. Alright, so the next thing on the agenda is, we've got a special presentation. We've got some pretty outstanding athletes behind me and we're gonna do some pretty special things right here. Andrew, if you would join me up here at the podium, I think you got a special thing that you wanted to read.
Alright, first off, I want to say congratulations Coach Matt Hodges and our Youngsville Green 8U All-Star team, who ended up being the 2019 SWAC Eastern State District Champions. The Green team was made up of some of our top performers in our Parkson Rec League this spring, and they shut out when this first began with winning the championship, and that they did. We started in the middle of June, they worked very hard practices, were coached extremely hard, and definitely grew from practices, scrimmages, to the actual tournament. Things got started off in a Thursday night in Rocky Mountain, we had a little bit of rain. That slowed us down a little bit, but then they came back and ended up mercy ruling every team that they went against. So I don't know if, you know, all of you know, but that's very challenging to do. And in the championship game, ended up doing a 10-0 shutout of Onslow County to become the Eastern District State Champions. After that, they went on to Aberdeen, where they had a tough battle, from what I was told, and unfortunately lost, but then came back to win the next day to continue surviving. After that, they played another tough game, and that is where their season came to an end as third place in the state of North Carolina for SWAC. And I know the town of Youngsville, myself, and everyone in this room is extremely proud of them, so if we could give them a round of applause. Now I'll turn it back over to Fonzie Flowers for his proclamation.
Did you want this back? Why don't I do that? I thought you... Oh, okay. So, coaches and parents, hopefully you guys are super proud of these guys. I know we were watching every move and every step, even from afar, I think one of the updates that we got here was at our last meeting. And there was some concern because of the rain, because of the current score, and these guys fought back, and they did it. So I was able to get out, I think, to the Sunday game and watch them mercy rule some team, and just outstanding athletes, very well coached. Really be proud of them. Another cool thing that I get to do as being mayor is I get to give out proclamations, and that's exactly what I'm gonna do. From the office of the mayor, that is me. Whereas coaches Matt Hodges, Mike Bailey, Jamie Robertson, Jim Consilia, and Jody Yeomans selected an All-Star team of young men to compete at a high level, and whereas Colt Sanders, Luke Parrott, Charlie Hance, Jaden Consilia, Luke McConnell, Landon Lowry, Jacob Yeomans, Evan Bailey, Connor Robertson, Landon Hillsman? Hillsman? Sorry about that. And Grayson Hodges, through hard work, dedication, and intense focus on competing at the highest level, meshed into a championship-worthy team, and whereas this team traveled to Rocky Mountain, North Carolina, and won the 2019 SWAC Eastern State District Title with an undefeated record, and whereas this team, representing Youngsville, went to Aberdeen, North Carolina, finishing third place in the state. And whereas our community has been enriched by watching these young men achieve these impressive goals. Now, therefore I, Fonzie A. Flowers, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Youngsville, do hereby proclaim Saturday, August 10th, 2019, as Youngsville Green 8U All-Stars SWAC Eastern State District Champions Day, in the town of Youngsville, congratulating and committing this team and coaches for the significance of their achievement on the field of play. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause to be affected the official seal of the town of Youngsville on this eighth day of August in the year 2019. Okay, so, we've got copies of this, and we're gonna give all you guys a key to the city. Is that cool with y'all? So when I call your name, come up, we're gonna hand you the proclamation, we're gonna hand you a key to the city, and if you guys will kind of... Yeah, if we can just kind of form around here, we're gonna get a nice picture together, we're gonna call your coaches up, we've got something special for them too, and then we've got another extra thing to do afterwards, so. Alright, we'll start with Colt Sanders. Oh, right here, bud. Alright, where's my point guard Luke Parrott at? Another former player of mine, Charlie Hance. Right here, bud. And Jaden Consilia. Luke McConnell. Landon Lowry. Jacob Yeomans. Evan Bailey. Another one of my former players, Connor Robertson. And the... The other two. Yeah, okay, and the other two on the team, I did read it throughout the proclamation, but Landon Hillsman and Grayson Hodges, so. Okay, so Mike, Jamie, Jim, and Joe. Okay, okay, alright. Sorry, I thought we had all this kind of labeled out, but things kind of changed. So assistant coaches, Mike Bailey. Jamie Robertson. Jim Consilia. And Jody Yeomans. And head coach Matt Hodges, if you can come up. And that's yours, and then you've got a little special extra here. The town of Youngsville presents this key to the 2019 SWAC Eastern District State Champions. Coach, there you go. It's gonna be difficult, but if we can get the coaches and kids kind of stationed around here, get some pictures, or is it gonna be easier going that way? Going this way?
If you didn't notice, the mayor took credit for all the players. Just saying. Just saying. Former player.
Now's the time to take as many pictures as you want to. You said this is going on Field 3? So this will be posted on Field 3, and I wanted the fence line, so it'll be basically memorialized forever, so all of those faces that you see now, people will be able to see 15, 20, 30 years from now. So, again, congratulations, guys. We went from having the largest or most highly attended audience to, yeah, three people. So, anyway. Now on the agenda is the time for citizens' comments, so I will turn the floor over to any citizen who has a comment. Alright, now we'll move along into the financial report, Ms. Patterson.
Hey, y'all, I feel really loud. Everything's going good. We close on the loan for the new vehicles tomorrow. It all seems to have gone smoothly, and the audit is next week, so lots going on. I have lots of work to do. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Patterson?
Then I can turn this mic back off.
Alright, thank you for that. Next up is the consent agenda, the action requested here is to approve consent agenda as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. There's no old business, so we'll move into new business, which is Item A, Resolution approving public sponsorship of a special event ball festival. This was in your packet, I'm assuming everyone had a chance to read over it. The action requested here is to approve the resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Sir.
Alright, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a resolution designating the planning, zoning, and subdivision administrator and codes enforcement officers. Again, the resolution was in your packet prior to the meeting, for you guys to read over. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, the action requested here is to approve the resolution. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Sir.
First and a second, alright. Do I hear any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Wow, that was special, okay. Reports and other business, me being the mayor, I really don't have anything very excited and happy for those youngsters. I think they were excited, and I think Andrew did a good job, and Phil did a good job of putting that together, getting everything ordered, and who knew that getting a key to the city was still like a big deal? So it's awesome to see eight-year-olds that really understood and enjoyed that, so. Other than that, it's been a long week at work, and I'm gonna decompress a little bit, so. Mr. Cordero.
Alright, so before everyone is a copy of some logos that were product of our branding study, so I just wanted to see if everybody has some comments. The first draft that was presented was the one that says "First Draft," and then after some comments that y'all shared with me, I passed on to the branding firm. We have our second draft, and there's two versions, Alpha and Bravo. So I have received some feedback, but I just wanted to kind of get everybody's thoughts.
I like "Second Draft B," it's nice and clear.
Base plan.
Second Draft B?
I like B.
You like B, okay. Is B the consensus? Commissioner Redd? What do you think Commissioner Stallings would say?
B.
No proxy votes.
Alright, well, I will bring a resolution before the next meeting to make this the new town logo, if that's okay with everyone, but unless there's any other comments, we can go ahead and move forward to start using this, if that's okay. And then, of course, we've got a lot of other products that came out of the branding study, designs for street signs, and first, other monument signs, things of that nature, and those will be presented at the next meeting. We'll hope to receive it by the end of next week, so there'll be more on that, but the logo is something that we wanted to get going first.
So is this a logo or a seal?
Sorry, seal, seal, seal. The new logo has been posted on the Facebook webpage, have you seen that? Had some positive feedback on that, but... That'll be presented at the next meeting as well. Any other questions or comments about the logo and/or the branding study?
I know I made a comment about the transition from more of a traditional and contemporary, et cetera, et cetera. Were they able to do anything with the items here to kind of transition from the old to the new?
As far as reordering them?
Yes.
Yes, so we actually do have an additional version that's forthcoming, so I can bring that before the next meeting when we present the rest of the materials. That's a good question. Any other questions or comments? Okay. The town's payment portal is now live, so we can accept credit cards, we can accept all forms of electronic payments, so we can do e-check, we can do credit cards, all types of credit cards for cash payments, registration for sports activities, and basically anything that you would want to pay the town. So if anybody's expressed frustration about that, certainly spread the word. And the new website is gonna be live by your next meeting. We received pretty much a second to final version on that this past week. I would like to poll everyone if they have some dates that they would be available in September. I wanted to update you, and Bob's gonna share a little bit more information on this, but the Planning Board has very diligently worked for the Unified Development Ordinance, and they made a recommendation at their meeting this week to bring it to this board. They basically approved it in its draft form. So I would like to set a date for a work session, because that is a pretty lengthy document, and I think that that would merit its own meeting. So, does anybody have any preferences for a meeting at time of September? Can we do maybe the third Thursday, or something of that nature? I don't know if anybody's in a position to make calendars, or if I can coordinate separately. That's right, Thursday, September 19th.
I won't be here.
Okay, is there... Does maybe the next week work for you? Thursday the 26th?
Possibly.
Okay, so I'll email a couple of dates to everyone, and if you could just respond, we'll set a work session for that date, but again, the purpose is just to review the Unified Development Ordinance. We'll have a special cameo appearance by Rick Flo within Focus, who's been working through that document with us, and he'll have very detailed answers to any questions that you may have. Does the board have a preference for time? Would you prefer to do it in the evening or during the day? Evening, okay, so we'll go in the evening.
That's 26th, is that right?
So we'll shoot for 6, sure, that works.
September 26th, is that correct?
Correct. September 26th at 6:00 PM. Yep. And I'll shoot that out via email, and if you don't have any conflicts, or if you could just confirm afterwards, that works for you. And that is all I have for my report.
Yeah, so how do you click this all?
I think it's because you're looking at it from a different angle.
Well, thank you for that, okay, alright. So, thank you for that, Mr. Cordero, and we'll...
Mine works.
Maybe it isn't better. Commissioner Redd?
Yes, sir. How are you today?
I'm doing great. Alright, Commissioner Wiggins? Okay, Commissioner Johnson?
No, sir.
And Commissioner Headland?
Just a couple of quick things, we did real clean last week, last Friday, LDS church volunteers. A lady also that works with Just Serve, which, she has a database of like 400 volunteers, so if we need... I've got some information, maybe that would be helpful to other groups, et cetera, et cetera. Pardon me? Just Serve. It's connected to the LDS church, but it branches out, not just the faith thing. So, and then September 28th ball festival, 9:00 AM, 9 to 3, 9 to 3, right?
Do you have a flyer that you can send me to Facebook?
Do you have a flyer?
It's made to you.
Please suck it to the mic.
Do you have a flyer that you can send me, so I can put it on Facebook? Or just details would be fine.
I'll have...
Sometimes it's hard to upload PDFs.
I'll have to send you some, but she's really headlining it.
Cool, awesome, thank you.
Thank you for that, alright. Mr. Clark with planning and zoning.
Good evening, and I've got, as a followback up on the... With that resolution of recognizing Erin Klinger, new town planner, she started Monday, I think the board's aware of that, I'll be jumping right in, and I think we've... She's very eager and a great person to be around. We've got this week, and the timing was perfect, because she was able to sit in on the planning board meeting at the wrap-up of the Unified Development Ordinance. One of our planning board members is here, Scott Anderson, and the planning board, again, kind of wrapping up their role at this point, but it's a good process. We look forward to the upcoming workshop, and Rick Flo will be coming back in in between now and then on some other things. We've got some different development-type things that are going on, and he's gonna be able to possibly meet with some folks about some opportunities for development in the community, and how this kind of fits in with some of the concepts in this plan, and stormwater and other things. But, and Danny Ute, in code enforcement, he got Erin out and drove her around some, and we were out in the field today looking at development possibilities, so it's a good start. It's her birthday today, so she's not here tonight, otherwise she'd be here, so. We've got, we've arranged some office space we haven't been by, and it's a good working relationship there in the office, glad to be there. We've got the upcoming workshop, and again, I mentioned about Rick Flo coming back. One of the things that we don't want to overlook, and he's particularly excited about the opportunity to do, and he mentioned this to the planning board as well, and that is, is that the downtown part of the overall master plan, and some of the opportunity sites, and how that kind of fits, we're gonna be trying to set up some meetings with several folks that would have some properties and kind of key locations, and kind of just reinforce some of the ideas that came out of that, and when they make some decisions in the future of what they want to do, just keep this in mind. in the future of what they wanna do, just keep this in mind, and, so, uh, we're gonna try to work that in and take advantage of that opportunity. That's all I have tonight.
Good deal, thank you for that, uh, any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Clark?
I, I have one question, in, in regards, um, does Sandy have an area that we could designate for her to work, rather than having the documents all over the floor when you walk in, it's kinda not a good first, nothing to do with her, because she's doing what she needs to do, but, first impression isn't.
Right.
Isn't positive. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, I can have a discussion with her and we'll make sure that.
It's not her, she has.
No, no, well, I'll have a discussion with her about what, she, she probably needs some more filing systems, you know, maybe an extra file cabinet or something like that, and then so, but I wanna be a, I wanna get her, I'd rather her choose the solution, so, you know, whatever, whatever equipment she needs, we'll make sure we get it for her, thank you for mentioning it.
Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns? Alright, thanks again, Mr. Clark, and I'll turn it over to our town attorney, Mr. Bartholomew.
Um, I let Phil know earlier today that I was in contact, well, not sort of contact, but sent an email to opposing counsel on Old Town Hall. The last email that I sent him, it's here, so I have little doubt that this one will also probably be the same. We set a drop date, date of next week as the answer date, so if we don't hear back from them, we'll be moving forward with other procedures for Old Town Hall.
And, uh, Ed and I discussed this via email, basically, you know, we've, we've, we've got an interested party in the Old Town Hall property, that process has lingered, and, um, there are other avenues for, that we can utilize to dispose of that government property, and so, at this point, I think it makes more sense to advertise a public auction for that property, in advance of the auction, we can certainly, uh, disseminate the results from the appraisal to give people an idea of what that property's worth, um, and depending on what the opposing council says or does not say, um, we can, I, I intend on bringing, uh, resolution potentially to the next meeting whereby you would approve an auction, um, the auction would happen, we'd pay a professional auctioneer, we'd do advertisements, after that, you still have to approve the winning bid, so it doesn't mean that, you know, let's say, the property goes for well below its current market value, you still have to approve the sale, so, there's really nothing in it to lose for the town, it just provides another option for us to dispose of this property, and you never know, we may get offers in excess of, of what we've currently got on the table, so, that's how we wanna proceed.
I would compare with what Phil just ran down there, I think we're at the point where it's been nearly a year and a half we've been sitting on this property, we're trying to negotiate with opposing counsel and with the interested party, and at this point, if we're not getting any feedback from them on what they need to do, then I think it's time to move on, and push that property to some way of giving a disposition, uh, where it's not just sitting on the books anymore, as a liability.
But that's not changing our, our line of thinking that whoever gets said winning bid would still have to do something within a specific timeframe, right? We're not just gonna bet it out and let someone store a bunch of junk, and they've gotta actually do something with that, okay? As long as we're not backing away from that, then.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think any of the conditions that the board has asked for as part of the sale of the property are going anywhere, um, so I think we're still gonna be within the confines of that as much as we can be within public sale world.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you for that, uh, any questions, comments, concerns for Mr. Bartholomew?
I do have, have there, I'm, and I'm sure, have there been phone calls made?
I've made phone calls, I've sent emails, I've sent a letter, I've gotten nothing in return for almost six months at this point, so, um, I'm to a point where I don't know what else I can do to try to reach out to opposing counsel and manage it, consistent with the ways that we've communicated in the past, so. We've communicated via phone calls in the past, we've communicated via emails in the past, and none of those avenues have been worked on.
And the difficult part is that, he can't circumvent the attorney-client relationship either, you know, he has to go through, they've decided to have, you know, legal representative, and so we have to go through that person as a conduit.
If he's not responding, then that may be something that his client needs to take up with him at some point in the future, um, which is something that was mentioned as part of the email.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything else other than that.
Yep. Alright, thanks, sir, uh, Chief Kimball?
How you doing?
Doing good.
Um, for the month, we've had thirty, we answered thirty-two calls, for the year to date, we're at four twelve of answering calls, in the past month, as you see, we've hired three new officers, we have one more that's, we're waiting to get back from the state, which should be sometime before the end of the month, and that will put us full for the time being, until the end of the year. Um, we're also, as I, pretty much I think everybody knows, um, Erin Womack, our front desk specialist, um, she's gotten up with Red Cross, and we're gonna do a blood drive. The date's gonna be November ninth, it's gonna be from ten to two-thirty.
November ninth is a Saturday, is that right?
Yes.
It's a Saturday.
Uh, at Faith Baptist Church, um, if you're willing to sign up, you can go on the Youngsville Facebook page and sign up, if you have any questions, you can contact, uh, Erin Womack at the office, and she can give you all the information that she, because she's heading up the whole program. And that's pretty much it.
Alright, thank you for that, uh, any questions, comments, concerns, uh, for Chief?
So I, I have one comment that, uh, I would like to commend Chief Kimball and the Police Department for their efforts to recruit, um, what I would consider to be some of the most talented police officers, uh, to join our team, um, it's not an easy thing to do, and I think the quality of police officer that we have now is excellent, and we have struggled for, for years with, uh, vacancies, and I wanna underscore the fact that he just communicated that they are fully staffed, they have no vacancies, so I, I, I think that's excellent, and I just wanna commend you for your efforts, um, because that's not something that's insignificant, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done. Alright, uh, Assistant Chief Graney could not be here tonight, uh, because he's helping his dad move, but he did send me a text and said that, uh, the only thing that he really wanted to, um, relay to us and the citizens of the town is that we are entering the height of hurricane season, now's the time for everyone to prepare their homes and emergency supplies, people can visit readync.org for more information. Hopefully, uh, hurricane season will be kind to us, seeing as how a regular storm a couple of months ago did tremendous, uh, water damage, and so, uh, having said that, I'll turn it over to Parks and Rec, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Um, as most of you know, our SWAC tournament was this past month, that went great, um, I wanna say thank you to all the volunteers that came out, um, thanks to Ed for singing the National Anthem, it was great, and, uh, and everyone that helped, we estimate that we had over four hundred people come out during that weekend, Fonzie wants credit for his first pitch, it was high and outside, but we're proud he made it over the plate.
That kid made me look good.
There you go. Um, this past Tuesday, I was in Peak Wave Arena for the SWAC Summer Conference, uh, we were committed for how it went, and we're told that we could host in the future at any age group, and our facilities were nice and up to par, so, that's also a, a great progress there, um, we had our first art class, which was, which was a success, we had over twenty letters that were, went out and were mailed to soldiers all around, so, uh, you know, they got to take home three, but, a couple of people chose to send a couple more, but that, that was great, our next art class is in two weeks, it's our hippie-themed month, so they will be doing tie-dye shirts and rainbow keychains, so that'll be fun. Um, fall baseball registration's open, we have evaluations this Saturday, um, we're looking forward to another season of that and enhancing our game day experience, um, with that, fall kickball is open, um, we just finished up our season of the summer with New Kicks on the Block taking home the trophy, um, they had a heck of a season, but Flower Power's ready to get back in it and take the championship. Um, we're having our first ever equipment drive, that'll take place Saturday, August twenty-fourth, from nine A.M. to noon, if you have any sports equipment you're willing to donate, um, if you would deliver it to Town Hall or personally give it to myself, that would be fantastic, any old equipment, uh, we're gonna be setting up tables, and, uh, it'll just be, no questions asked, people can walk up, it's all free, they can donate, uh, cleats, bats, helmets, uh, soccer balls, whatever you're willing to get out of your garage would be much appreciated. Um, and finally, this past month, we renewed as NCRPA, so we're still state-certified, and we also gained our NRPA certification as a Parks and Rec department, so now we are nationally accredited as well, so that's very exciting, I'll be going to Baltimore here in September, uh, with that, so, really excited about that and both of those things for our department, and, uh, thanks for all your support, and that is it for me.
Um, I have a question, please, do you make events on Facebook for like the hippie tie-dying stuff, or do you have an event page, so I could share it with the town, or?
It's just the posts on, on their own, I can, I mean, I can do it.
No, I can go find it, would you like me to make event pages for you, or would you prefer I just, um, share the post?
Uh, I, I can do both, um, I'll make a page, but if you wanna share the post, that would be great as well.
Fantastic, I'm on it.
And if you, he actually does have a calendar as well, an Outlook calendar that anybody can see and see all the Parks and Rec events, if you could send those links to her, that'd be great.
Okay, will do.
Alright, any other questions for Mr. Smith?
I do have one question, what's the status of the backboards in the rooms at Luddy Park on the basketball court?
So, uh, when they were going up, the company that we were using unfortunately dropped them, you know, and forklifted them, so we have reached out to the company demanding that they obviously be fixed, replaced, or, um, we will withhold their final payment and the amount that it takes for the new backboards and rims, um, the last we heard from them is they were gonna come out to investigate it and see it in their own eyes, um, and we told them to let us know whatever day that was, so Phil and myself can both be there for that process.
Either way, we'll hold them accountable for the damage, and it'll get fixed.
Well, the one rim, that was bent before, though. It's the same old rim as bent.
Right.
Not to the extent that this is now. Well, it's worse, it's even worse carnival hoop now, where the front is smashed in.
It's an oval like an egg.
I know the one, the one is really destroying.
Correct, and, you know, we can compromise with them, you know, we don't expect to have, you know.
Just curious.
Well, yeah, we're, we're having a discussion with them, make it work.
We were hopeful they would just be able to put them back up as is, because we've got.
I'm ready to start shooting, man.
Yeah, we've got, well, we've got two rims that could've gone up there, but, I mean, the fiberglass, when it hit, it just, yeah, shattered all of them.
Is there still a plan to put pickleball in there?
Yes, we have to wait on the goals, is what the guy, the painting company requested, was everything be up besides the fence before they went and did any of their lining.
But they're gonna stripe basketball white, and then royal blue.
Royal blue will be pickleball.
Correct.
I'm gonna go out and buy some pickleball stuff, I don't know anything about pickleball, but I'll start playing it, looks fun.
Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns for, uh, Mr. Smith? Alright, hearing none, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hurd, Town Clerk, and Tax Collector. That was quick, okay, um, any updates from maintenance?
Um, we are going to, uh, be conducting interviews later this month for our public work supervisor position, and everything is on track as far as maintenance is concerned.
Alright, sounds good, okay, uh, the next thing on the agenda is closed session, uh, we do need to go into closed session, uh, North Carolina General Statutes, one-four-three dash three-eighteen dot eleven, uh, Item Six Personnel, uh, do I hear a motion to go into closed session? So, we got a, first and a second, any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Alright, we'll go into closed session. Alright, so the time is currently eight nineteen, we went into closed session to discuss North Carolina General Statutes, one-four-three dash three-eighteen dot eleven, Article Six Personnel, no action was taken, and the next item on the agenda is to adjourn, and this meeting is adjourned.